Thank you, team, and thank you for being here tonight. And I want to begin tonight by thanking you first for being who you are. And really, for being who God has allowed us to be as a church family. The hard work and dedication and commitment that you've exhibited in the past eleven and a half years toward the mission and vision of our church has been absolutely incredible. I want you to know that you continually amaze me, not only as a congregation, but just in your individual display of love for our church, for other people, for your pastor and staff, and most of all, for our community. Since becoming your pastor in 2008, each year we've gathered at a meeting such as this, sometimes more than once a year, to simply outline our church's ministry in terms of where we've been, where we are now, and where we're headed in the future. In those gatherings, I've shared with you many statistics of how God is using you in amazing ways. Regarding some of those amazing ways, think about this in the way that God is using you. I'm going to tell you this tonight because I'm excited and I want to brag on you just a little bit in the fact that God, through God's power and through your efforts as a church, our church is number 24 out of over 3,500 Tennessee Baptist churches in the Tennessee Baptist Convention, number 24 in terms of our spiritual and numerical growth, with the basis of that growth being those who have been sought and bought by the power of the gospel and those who have traveled through the waters of baptism. To God be the glory. All that God has accomplished for His kingdom through Grace Baptist Church has been done through strategic planning, under the guidance of the Holy Spirit, and in conjunction with the wisdom of our great leadership teams that lead our congregation. I want to take just a moment just to brag on all of our leadership teams, but tonight I want to specifically express my appreciation for our deacon body. This group of men who lead the ministry efforts in our church are the godliest men I have ever known. When you get the opportunity, send a card to them, maybe perhaps even send a note, a text, or an email, but let them know how much you appreciate their ministry to the kingdom through serving this congregation. The Bible says in Proverbs, Chapter 29, verse 18, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." Quite honestly, each one of us needs a plan of destination for each and every aspect of our lives, or we'd simply wander aimlessly through everyday life. Certainly, there's no difference when it comes to our spiritual lives and the life of our church. So tonight, I want to reiterate God's plan for Grace Baptist through the vision that He unfolded last year. And then I also want to rekindle afresh for you tonight a vision and strategy that really encompasses the next 10 years of ministry here at Grace Baptist. So I start tonight very simply talking about that overarching goal and mission that will encompass us and our ministry for the next 10 years. It was simply lay a foundation of a plan and goal of reaching and baptizing 101 lost people per year in our community. Everything we do is housed under our strategy and vision entitled 101. Our plan is to reach, baptize, and teach 101 lost people from our community. We began this journey way back January 1st, 2015, and our plan is to continue with this strategy until April 15th, 2029. The ultimate accomplishment of this quest will be the realization of 1,515 people reached, baptized, and taught, or taught, over an entire 15-year time span. This number coupled with the folks that we've already reached over the past 11 and a half years will result in approximately 15% of our community having been reached, okay, and given a choice of change for their lives, all through the power of the gospel, all through the efforts of you as Grace Baptist Church. I want you to understand something tonight, that to me, hopefully to everyone in this room, the idea of God using us as a church to reach 15% of our community and that be our lion's share portion of what God wants us to do with the gospel, that type of community impact is still as exciting to me tonight as it was five years ago when God first presented it. And let me quickly remind you of your responsibility as a congregation in regards to 101. At the beginning of this church year, back in September, I challenged you that we would reach unchurched or lost person at least one per quarter, and then we would invite an extra one at Christmas and then again at Easter in 2020. And this one person per quarter and then an extra at Christmas and Easter effort, in that, many of you have far exceeded the challenge. I applaud you in your efforts in inviting people that you come in contact with to experience a worship service and coming with you as their personal guest. Some, however, are running just a little bit behind on the challenge. But let me reignite the passion for us all tonight by reminding you that by and large, most people will attend a church service, they will come to a worship experience on the heels of a personal invite. Furthermore, when they come to a worship service at Grace Baptist Church, after your invitation and they accept, when they come to a service here at Grace Baptist Church, they will be guaranteed an invitation for life change through the power of God's Word. In April 2018, I came before you as your pastor to present to you a vision that God had intricately detailed in the portals of my heart. This vision was shared with our leadership teams, and we spent more than a year processing, praying, and tweaking what we believe God desired for us to present to you in terms of our future. This vision, labeled as Journey into Eternity, or most commonly known as JIE, was unanimously affirmed by our congregation in May of 2019. When this vision was presented, it was broken down into phases of how each aspect would be implemented in order for us to accomplish through these aspects over the entire five-year period how these would come together and be in completion. Tonight, I want to take you on a journey, a journey through our journey, a journey through a journey that began last year but will impact our community for all eternity. And this is really where our journey begins and Journey into Eternity. Phase one of this five-year to 10-year encompassing vision begins here, and I'm standing in our children's hallway of what is known as the children's wing, and this is where Grace Baptist Academy was supposed to begin. Now, Grace Baptist Academy is the first phase of JIE, and everything in terms of phase one would be encompassed in what we know as renovation or remodel. So it's here where everything was to begin, and in our current children's, our current children's, it's here where everything was supposed to begin. I've said that, and as you can see, as of right now, things aren't housed, our Grace Baptist Academy is not housed here in our current children's wing, and there's many reasons for that, and I'll share along the way. Now, we actually did begin renovation, if you will, in a sense, in terms of tear out here in our children's department and things for the last little bit. If you have a child, K through fifth grade, you know this quite well, things have been kind of disarrayed here, but I've got great news that things are getting ready to transform even by the end of this month, and through the first part of 2020, you're going to see some great, great improvement in this area. But one of the things that has delayed us, that really kept us from beginning, Grace Baptist Academy here in this part of our facility, is, well, state regulations and codes. We've just now, almost a year into this thing, received our plans back from the state with everything that has to be done in order to be able to put a Christian private school here. So meanwhile, we weren't able to start here, but we were able to start here. I'm standing in what you know on Sunday morning and Wednesday night, Sunday evening in the mainstream part of our church. This is the Slater Education Building, named after our former pastor, Brother Kyle Slater, and this building was built about six years ago, and it was never intended for the purpose of Grace Baptist Academy, but through the Lord's provision and the way this building was built, it was ready state code wise and all to be able to house a Christian private school for us to continue our time schedule and our timeline to begin Grace Baptist Academy in 2019, just August of this year. So I'm thankful we did make the transition, a couple of transitions actually, as we began Grace Baptist Academy. One, to relocate it here to start, and again, in the future, it will encompass both not only this area, but our children's, our renovated children's wing. But we were able to start here, and what an incredible start that we've had. In August of 2019, which would be phase two of our JIE, our journey within our Journey into Eternity, in August 2019, we began Grace Baptist Academy, a Christian private school designed and purposed so that we could reach these young folks, reach into the lives of these families with the power of the gospel, and things have gone extremely well. The parents that are a part of Grace Baptist Academy, most of which, by the way, are not members of our congregation, they're not part. So we're reaching into the community and partnering with these parents and helping to raise these children in the fear and admonition of the Lord. While we teach them arithmetic and we teach them algebra and we teach them calculus, well, that's to come later. Right now, they're just K3 and K4. But what an incredible time that we've had and what incredible support that we've had from you as a congregation, support from the community, support from the parents, and support in educating these kids with, I believe, the finest staff that a Christian private school could have and to start with. As you can see, these teachers are investing in these children and doing a great job. As a matter of fact, our four-year-olds, our K4, are learning how to write in cursive, something that I don't even do very well. As you know, with every journey, there's a responsibility and just a privilege and the excitement of preparation and planning, certainly that's been a part of all of our JIE, but well, especially as it encompasses GBA. This was a major step up. Eleven-year vision and dream that God had birthed in my heart when I first came to Grace Baptist Church, and then it was implemented last year through your approval and your affirmation. But as we prepare for a journey, you know, if you've ever been on vacation and you're headed somewhere, the preparation can be smooth, but sometimes the delivery can be a little rocky. You never know when you're going to have a flat tire, you never know when you're going to run out of gas, or you never know well when you may even get lost along the journey. Certainly, ours has not been filled with pitfalls, but there have been some adjustments along the way. I'll talk about a lot of adjustments to JIE, but as it pertains to our facility, as it pertains to Grace Baptist Academy, here's some of the things that we encountered. I've already shared one within terms of our children's hall. We weren't able to receive our plans back to know exactly what we needed to do in order to make that area suitable to house Christian education, but the Lord provided. He made a provision for us that we could move into the Slater Education Building and use our fellowship hall that I'm in now, and our students on GBA, they know it as the cafeteria, but you know it as the fellowship hall. So many provisions have been made along the way. One of other things that we encountered and started, we decided that we would start originally with pre-K3, K4, and kindergarten. As we got closer, we decided that it might be much more conducive for us just to start small and allow God to grow that big. So we just started with pre-K3 and K4. We will begin, as Phase Three shows you, we will begin with kindergarten in August of this next year, August 2020, but we did shave off a grade in order to keep things and house things where we could manage it effectively. Some of the other things that we encountered in terms of the partnership between Grace Baptist Academy and Grace Baptist Church is just the sharing of space and the necessity to have as much space as possible. And over this past year, as far as Phase One and renovations, that not only encompassed being able to provide these new classrooms, or these classrooms with all the new mobile furniture that they needed to adequately prepare for these students and have centers and have the right equipment in order to prepare these three-year-olds and four-year-olds from an adult education building. And all of that has gone very smoothly and worked very well, but we also realized that there were some other areas of our church that needed attention and that could be used more adequately in the life of our church. So subsequently, through this renovation of Phase One, we've gone through all of the areas of the church that normally housed storage and was used for storage, and we have renovated those areas to be usable for either classroom or workspace. One of those areas is here above our fellowship hall. We were able to take out all the storage here and relocate it to the warehouse and then begin renovations on a room that can not only be used for a classroom, it can also serve as a hangout for our high school students. This is an area that they come to on Wednesday night from 6:00 to 6:45 while they await their worship. Where Brother Michael is able to minister to the middle school students there at the YMCA, our high school students hang out here, and these tables and chairs are gone, and as you can see on the back wall, it's filled with gaming and that type of entertainment where kids can come and just have a time of fellowship and a place to call their own on Wednesday night. And this is another one of our renovated areas. This, of course, used to be a storage space, but as you could see, it's been transformed to a multifunctional aspect of our ministry. It encompasses workspace for not only our MDO teachers, but even our regular GBC preschool teachers. And also, it is a new entrance to our baptistry. With the securing of our preschool department and its current renovation, we needed a new way to get to the baptistry. So this serves as not only an entrance to the baptistry, but we have brand-new changing rooms that make things a lot more convenient for those who have given their lives to the gospel and are walking through the waters of baptism. And now that brings us to another area that has been not only the most needed, but the most impactful probably of all of our renovations thus far, and that is this new parking lot. We were able by Easter of this year to implement this parking lot, and as a result of that, we have had adequate parking. Now, I understand that things need to be paved and things need to be striped, but first things first, we have an adequate space to park, and this has been so impactful for our church, but not just our church, both for GBA and MDO, as we're able to kind of logistically route parents to the direction that they need to go. This has been a much-needed improvement to Grace Baptist Church as a whole. Certainly, not part of GBA, but certainly a part of JIE is any kind of enhancements we could do to our facilities to make things easier for our church members and our guests alike to use, and one of those is the facilities. This is one area that most everybody in our church visits, at least sometime during a service or at least in a week's time. So we were able to do and have been and are continuing to work on some much-needed renovation in our facilities or what you might know as the bathroom. But this is
And this is really where Phase One and Two of our journey ends, but really it just begins for the next phases. But I'm standing in our MDO/GBC preschool department. This is an area that we began actually before 2019. This is the first thing that we did when we began JIE with a one-day offering in August of 2019. We began renovations on this area. Many of you know that this is where our administrative offices were, and we were able to relocate to our current administrative building and therefore open this up to be a renovated, modern, and much-used and much-needed preschool area, a secure preschool area where your kids can come and feel comfortable and confident and secure, and they can be loved on by a host of gracious volunteers on Sunday morning and Wednesday night. But throughout, this is a great area, and our children, our young children, have been able to come and learn about Jesus as they're rocked as babies or even to the toddler stage of two, three, and four-year-olds. Here, they're loved on by a professional gracious volunteer and paid staff. Through Friday, this would serve as a two-day-a-week called Mother's Day Out, a two-day-a-week preschool. So as you can see, we have been busy for the last 16 months, and some of these things that you've seen physically, some of them you didn't even know took place until tonight when you see this video. But I want you to understand that things have gone extremely well, and even though we've had some bumps along the journey, has made great provision in terms of fiscal responsibility and stewardship. As you know, Phase One of this journey was estimated to cost $350,000, but because of our full-time construction team that's housed within our facilities department and a whole host of volunteers that work regularly throughout the year to come alongside of these professional construction workers, all of this that you see has not cost us $350,000, but has come under the price tag of just under $138,000. That is, so you know that your JIE dollars that you have given have been able to be stretched as far as they possibly can because of the good stewardship of our finance team, the good stewardship and resources of our staff, and being able to do all of this are far under what we estimated the cost would be.
As we continue our journey within our journey, our journey through our journey, setting our sights now on Phase Three and Four, both of these phases encompass the purchasing of additional property and a building, a building that would be used for future space of Grace Baptist Church and would also function as a community ministry center. Phase Three begins here, and I'm here on location at what is known as the Beasley Building, a 37,000-square-foot warehouse that, well, is known as the Beasley Building, but we have already commonly dubbed it as the Community Ministry Center. Here would be a plan that would develop through 2019 and into 2020 and be a foundation to a plan to minister to our entire community through community ministry from a one-stop The plan for this facility would be that we would invite some other ministries to come alongside of us and share space inside this warehouse. It would also be adequate to house any of our large group needs, which you know we have lots of that. Anytime that we gather together as a church, we have to, well, we have to rent the center or find some other location, and this would be a perfect opportunity to have large group gatherings as well as be able to host that for some community events as well. Also, our current admin building that we're leasing, the part, that plan would be that the admin building could relocate here inside this property as well as any other church space needs that we have. Raw warehouse space is essential for us, so certainly a portion of this building would remain open for just storage because we don't have anymore at church since we've renovated all those areas. But this building, along with another piece of property owned by the same person, would be part of a package deal for the future of our ministry. And here we are at the property known as the Beasley Property. This would be part of a package deal that we would go into or enter into with Trem Beasley with the purchase of the warehouse. This property owned by him, 70 acres, would be the future of where Grace Baptist Academy would relocate to and eventually our entire church campus and ministry. Now, the question becomes today, what about these properties and where are we on these properties? Well, many of you know that our plans changed in terms of the land that we just saw. As the owner really wanted us to buy the property first, that wasn't our original plan nor our goal, is to first purchase this building, and September of 2019, just a few months ago, is when we were scheduled to close on this building, and then in 2021, we would purchase the property owned by the same person. The owner approached us and asked us really to deviate from that schedule. Many of you remember back in May of 2018, we prayed and fasted, and as a congregation, we believed that it was, we were on the right schedule to purchase the building first, then the property. So subsequently, we lost the property. It's been sold, and there's some development on it already, but when one door closes, God always opens another door. I'll talk about that in just a minute. So where are we on this building? Many of you know we spent many months in negotiations with Trem Beasley, the owner, and we came to a conclusion in September or August of 2019, and Trem and his brother did accept our proposal of $900,000. That's what we had set out to purchase this property for, but there was only one stipulation, and that was the fact that we could not pay cash for the building. They wanted that to receive based on retirement setup, they wanted to receive that in equal installments over 10 years. We prayed about it as a leadership team, and we came to the conclusion that we need to postpone the purchase of this building for a period of time, so hopefully the conditions of that sale would change. And meanwhile, through all of this, God brought something else in store that would help us continue to grow, even with the loss of that property and the postponement of this property that we also had to give attention to.
And here is the open door. As we are on location at our brand-new Greenbrier Campus location, all of this is brand-new and really what would be known as a deviation to our original plan. With the loss of the purchase of the land and then postponing the building purchase, we still have to have opportunity to grow, and the Lord knew that. Of course, all of this, none of this caught the Lord off guard. He knew, but yet we had to experience it. So when, as I said earlier, when one door closes, another opens, and here we are at Greenbrier Campus. This is actually the brand-new location where Greenbrier Campus will begin to meet on January 5th. As you know, currently, they're meeting in the middle school, but this is the provision that God has given to us to continue to grow and meet the spacing issues that we've had. As you have noticed, over the last few months, as Greenbrier has transitioned, many of our folks came with Brother Johnny to help in this campus endeavor, and since the opening of Greenbrier, we baptized 16 folks from here. We've had five surrender in the ministry, and many guests have come and experienced the gospel. Many have joined the Greenbrier Campus. So as this campus continues to grow, it allows Grace Baptist Church as a whole to continue to minister to our community in various segments and also continue to grow as a church without having to have additional space even on our campus. Now, as I'll talk about in just a few moments, we've got to make some permanent provision, but campus ministry here at Greenbrier and then possibly in our future, another campus in another location of Robertson County. And throughout, as you already know, we have campuses in Italy. I'll talk more about that in just a few minutes as well. But campus ministry has been a great tool in the hand of God for Grace Baptist Church. So thank you for your support, and thank you as we look and understand what the future holds because we're following the one who holds the future. The future is bright in Greenbrier. The future is bright for our main campus, and the future is bright for Grace Baptist Church and how we're going to reach our community.
As you can see, the plan and the vision that God has laid out for us has been filled with some exciting aspects and enhancements to our ministry as well as some twists and turns. As we've moved forward on our plan and schedule, God has been busy providing the necessary provisions for those unexpected and unattended events that often accompany any journey. The provisions or the deviations from the original plan have allowed us to accomplish thus far what God has intended in terms of ministry, even though the road behind us and before us doesn't necessarily look the same. But not only have there been some deviations in the physical aspect of the plan, there have been some deviations or deficiencies in the financial aspect of the plan. there have been some deviations or deficiencies in the financial aspect of the plan. Let me spend just a few minutes tonight addressing how things have thus far unfolded financially. As you recall, our plan to pay for what God has laid out for us to accomplish in terms of community ministry began last August in a JIE capital campaign whereby the church, you as the church, were challenged in two specific areas. First, in April of two thousand and eighteen, I, as your pastor, challenged and prepared you for a one-day offering that would be collected in August of two thousand and eighteen. Based on the Lord's bidding, I asked you to spend the next five months at that time preparing and challenge. And then I challenged each family to perhaps give five hundred dollars above your normal giving to this offering. Our goal to raise on that day, based on the number of giving units available within our church at that time, our goal was two hundred and ten thousand dollars. On August twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, we collected fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This amount was slightly off-plan. However, it did provide us enough resources to complete our preschool area and begin with some of our other renovations that you saw tonight. Furthermore, beyond the one-day offering, I asked each of you in a giving unit to pledge an amount that you felt comfortable giving, again, above what you would normally give. Preparation and challenge was given for this part of our capital campaign as well. The target amount that I challenged you with was that each family or each given unit would pledge and give perhaps systematically twenty-five dollars a week or a hundred and eight dollars a month above your normal tithe and offering. The anticipated pledged amounts would equate to an approximate amount of one million, eighty thousand dollars over the two-year span. Therefore, collectively, the anticipated amount for an entire JIE campaign through the one-day offering and the pledged systematic giving would be one million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars over the entire two-year span. As it stands currently, fifteen months into our capital campaign, we have collected a total of two hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. This amount is approximately six hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and four dollars off our plan. Now the question becomes, where do we go from here? Well, this is the most exciting part of the night for me. Come on. As I preached last Sunday, one of the hardest but but most rewarding aspects of our journey with Jesus is moving forward by faith. In that, just as God called Moses to send out twelve spies to survey the future and bring back a report and even a piece and a glimpse of the the future, bring it back to the congregation in regards to going to the promised land, I believe that this is exactly what God has called us to do. Because some of our short-term plans and our long-term plans have had some variations and deviations, I believe that we need to regroup. And in that, I believe that we ought to assemble a group of spies to go out and venture into the future to see how God intends for us to continue in our journey into eternity. Upon the deacon's approval, I'm going to pray through the assembling of a journey team to explore the options we have in building a facility that would encompass the need for GBA's future as well as the relocation of our admin building and satisfy also the space needed for us to be in one location as we meet as a church on Sundays and Wednesdays for worship and all the other ministries that are housed throughout the week, all here at the main campus. Perhaps the exploration would include a facility adequate for all of our needs and even constructed right here on our current property. Again, as I said in the video, this doesn't void or negate our future purchase of the Community Ministry Center. But this just might could serve as an intermediate step of taking care of housing our current short-term ministry needs as we move into the future. As we close tonight, we've talked about where we've been. We talked about where we are. And we talked about the possibilities of the future. As we give thought to an exciting future, I don't want us to leave behind how exciting our present is. The Lord is setting things up miraculously for two thousand and twenty. He's doing it in a special and unique way. I want to highlight for just a few moments, some of the things that will be taking place in the very near future. First, listen to this. Your children's minister search team has been working diligently since the summer to pinpoint who the Lord is sending us to lead our children. We've been blessed to have Nicole James and Shannon Davis on our staff to lead our preschoolers. And they've both been filling in the gap of children's ministry since Brother Michael's transition to student minister. I'm very happy to announce tonight that our search team has found a viable candidate and will be bringing that person very soon and very soon, come on, to meet with our personnel team. This is very exciting for all of us. In order to prepare, however, for the possible coming of a new children's minister, Dr. Parker has been strategizing about the best way to arrange our children's department in the coming year. There's still many prayers to be prayed and certainly due diligence to be done. But there's a real possibility that our children's department could be transitioning back into their former schedule at the start of the new year. Stay tuned as decisions are made in the best interest of our children and the glorious future of GBC. Other areas that have been evaluated is our youth department. Brother Michael has and is doing a wonderful job in leading our middle and high school students since Brother Johnny transitioned his role in leading our Greenbrier Campus. Let's take a moment to hear from Brother Michael. And here are the exciting changes that are taking place in his department.
Hey, everybody, this is Brother Michael. Wanted to bring you some important information that is coming that will affect our youth department starting in January. So let's start with Sunday School for middle school and for high school. Starting on January the fifth, our middle schoolers and our high schoolers will only meet for Sunday School at nine-thirty. There will be no more eight o'clock Sunday School. We will only meet at nine-thirty. We're doing this for a couple of reasons. The first reason is we want to be able to have a meeting with all of our students in one place at one time. And so this will accommodate that. We'll have a meeting in the loft with all of our students, with all of our Sunday School teachers from nine-thirty until nine-forty-five. And at this meeting, we'll talk about things that are coming up throughout the week. We'll talk about things that are coming up throughout the month. There'll be opportunities for students to pick up their life group tickets there if they want to go ahead and purchase those early, which I highly recommend. And then at nine-forty-five, our middle school will go down to room two oh seven, where they will have Sunday School from nine-forty-five to ten-forty-five. And our high school is going to do something a little bit different for the next two months. We're going to split up our high schoolers during Sunday School of boys and girls. And we want to do that because we're going to be taking a very, very close look at a great book called Defined. And I don't know if you know this or not, but our students are under a lot of pressure from the enemy, from the world around them. And the entire point is for him to lie to them and tell them a lie about themselves, to tell them that that they're not good enough, to tell them that they're not ever going to be good enough. And what we want to do is to redefine their identity through answering the question, who does God say that I am? Who does God say that I am supposed to be? And so what we want to do for the next two months, January through February, we want to split up our students, guys and girls, and tackle issues that really defines guys and tackles issues that really defines girls. And so we hope that you will join us for that. And so here's how that will work. From nine-forty-five to ten-forty-five, our high school girls will remain in the loft for their Sunday School. And from nine-forty-five to ten-forty-five, our high school boys will meet in room two oh six. So those are a couple of changes that are coming to Sunday School for our students here at Grace Baptist Church. And I am excited to see what God is going to do as we really reshape our identity into who God wants us to be. Hey, one of the things that we are the most excited about in our student ministry in two thousand and twenty is our life groups. And you should have got a letter from me in the mail that has a tentative schedule for all of our life groups that we're going to do throughout the year. But our spring semester life group tickets will be on sale January the fifth, and they're going to be first come, first served. So please make sure that you pick up and buy your tickets early. If you need another copy of that schedule or maybe you lost it or maybe you accidentally thrown it away, I will have copies of that schedule. That's a middle school life group schedule along with all the other activities that we have planned for the year and high school life group sheet with all the activities we have planned for them for the year. I'll have those sheets on me at the information center in the fellowship hall between now and then on Sundays. But please make sure that you come and you pick up your life group tickets early. Remember, those will go on sale January the fifth. Thanks. Starting up on January the eighth, we're going to have a slight schedule change for our middle schoolers on Wednesday nights. Throughout the rest of last semester, our middle schoolers have been meeting at the Y for worship and then for their connect time. But what we really want to do is get them back on campus. And so here is how this is going to work. From six o'clock to six-forty-five, our middle schoolers will remain on campus. They'll come to the loft for worship. And then at six-forty-five, they'll get back on the bus and go to the YMCA for their rec and connect time. And our high school schedule will stay the exact same. So if you're a high schooler or a high school parent member, our high schoolers meet at six o'clock in the hangout. And they meet from six o'clock to six-forty-five. And then at six-forty-five, they will rotate as the middle schoolers are leaving to go to the Y. And they will come up to the loft where they engage in worship. If you have any questions at all about any of the changes that's coming, you can be thrilled to email me or send me a text. I'll be more than happy to sit down and talk with you about the future life of our students here at Grace Baptist. And we're excited to see what God is going to do in two thousand and twenty. Thanks, guys. We'll see you soon.
As I mentioned earlier, our satellite campus ministry has been very productive for the kingdom. With the recent addition of our Greenbrier Campus in conjunction with our campus in Mon Calieri, Italy, God is setting the tone for our future. One of the items that you have hopefully noticed in the two thousand and twenty proposed budget is the possible expansion of our Italian ministries. Since two thousand and fifteen, when we began full-time ministry in Italy, we've developed some great relationships with many evangelical pastors across the region. Davison Fiera is a long-tenured pastor of the Chiesa Baptista della Florenzia or the Baptist Church of Florence, Italy. Pastor Davison has requested of us that we would include his campus under the banner of Grace Baptist Church. And that would provide him even more opportunity to reach the peoples of Italy. This would not only be a great opportunity for him to move into full-time ministry, but it would be great for us to have an Italian minister to oversee our entire Italian ministry operation. With the unfortunate and unforeseen circumstance of having to dismiss our former Mon Calieri pastor for some inappropriate behavior back in the spring of this year, we believe that adding Pastor Davison and the Florence Campus would be very stabilizing for our future ministry in Italy. Pastor Davison has been vetted thoroughly over the last nineteen months. And bringing he and his campus onboard would be very advantageous for the gospel. In closing, again, tonight, I love to close. Let me say how thankful that I am for you, how thankful I am for Grace Baptist Church. I want you to understand that you're amazing people that have amazing hearts. I want to say a special thank you for allowing myself, along with my family and your staff, to minister to you this past eleven and a half years. And I'm humbled when I think of the fact that he's allowed me just to be your pastor. I want you to know, and as I've often said, that these have been and truly are the best days of my life in ministry. Now, as we move forward, let us engage our hearts in the who and the what and the where and the when and the how of how God wants to accomplish His mission in Robertson County and around the world, all through the amazing congregation of Grace Baptist Church. And as always, may God bless you as His people and Grace Baptist as His church. In that, I want to change hats and roles if I can. And Brother Johnny and Dr. Parker are going to help us with this with the microphone. But I want to move into a time of town hall meeting, if we will. This is an informal setting where you had the privilege and opportunity to ask questions about all that you have heard transpire over the last hour of introduction. As you can see, we've been on a great journey and we're on a journey. And God has a great journey ahead of us. But maybe perhaps you, as you took some notes tonight, you've got some questions that you'd like to to express and ask. And I promise you this, that the question you have, the one sitting across from you or the one sitting behind you, they got the same question. So ask that question on their behalf. If you want to, say, I'm asking this for the person behind me. Either way, I know that this is for for those of you who've not been a part of something like this, in a meeting like this where we have a town hall meeting. I know this is probably very unusual. All my pastor friends, I tell you this every time we do it, all my pastor friends think I'm crazy for doing this, amen. But here's the bottom line, as your pastor, well, one, I am crazy, come on. But don't, but number two, I want you to know everything that you need to know, everything that you want to know about where we're going, where we're, and I'm going to answer it best you best I can. If I don't know, I'm going to look at Melanie and say, I know you retired, but tell me the answer. All right. But this is your opportunity to ask your question about what things look like. Brother Johnny's on standby as well. If you've got questions about the Greenbrier Campus, he is an expert in that campus as God is using him mightily over there. And we're excited about the start of January fifth and their permanent location and and being able to transition from the middle from the elementary school there. So, all right, here we go, questions. All right, Ms. Ruthie goes first. Brother Johnny, you help me keep track of the hands while Dr. Parker's moving. Please wait for the microphone. I know you probably don't want to talk in a microphone, but there are hundreds of people who are watching online right now. And they want to hear your question because they got one too.
All I got to ask is, since Brother Drake is gone, who's going to be over the cafeteria workers? Because we're going to have to have a new schedule.
Okay, new schedule is coming. Obviously, I mean, the question regarding Brother Drake. And certainly, I want you to understand something. It's already a hole, not only in my heart, but in the life of our church. But Brother Drake, we're excited about his transition. Don't forget, let me put a commercial in, December twenty-ninth is going to be his day. Okay, it's going to be the Lord's day, but the Lord is going to honor him. And we're coming together as a whole family. And after we have worship, I'm excited about the fact that everybody, even the Greenbrier Campus, will be here to worship together and experience that. But then after that, we're going to honor Brother Drake. And we're going to have a little luncheon, not a luncheon, I'm sorry, just a reception for Brother Drake. And that's going to be your opportunity to kiss him on the cheek, maybe give him a check or something. I don't know, whatever you want to do and just love him. But what a great man of God and what an incredible servant of the Lord. Yes. Don't tell him I said that, he'll get the big head, okay? But to answer your question, Ms. Ruthie, our staff has made some adjustments and readjustments. Ms. Jackie Rawls will be the one who will be setting out schedules. But as far as we're still working out the details of who's going to take the responsibility in the helm for that for the Wednesday night meal team and the kitchen services team. So we'll we'll soon and very soon, we'll have an answer for you. But I promise you this, you'll have a schedule and you won't be neglected. Thank you for your service to Kitchen Services Team. All right, who's next?
So we covered a lot of age groups, children's, middle school, high school. And we just talked about Drake and his transition. So what happens to college and career?
Great question, okay. So beginning, really, tonight would be our last night of college and career ministry. Really, for December and for this semester, really, our high school, because next week we have our worship service. So things can kind of ride out for this year. Beginning in January, college and career, Brother Johnny will take the helm of college and career. And college and career will meet at the Greenbrier Campus. Give us the time, Brother Johnny.
We'll meet with him at seven-thirty on Wednesday nights.
Seven-thirty on Wednesday nights at the Greenbrier Campus. And Brother Johnny will lead that ministry along with his worship leader at the Greenbrier Campus that would basically lead all the way through youth. And when youth is done, college and career will begin. And again, college and career will house at the Greenbrier Campus. It's a great question.
This may be a dumb question, but where is the new Greenbrier Campus located?
Amen. Brother Johnny, give us a little information about the Greenbrier Campus.
Okay, the the Greenbrier Campus currently is, you know, we're moving from the elementary school into the Franklin Farm Shopping Center.
school into the Franklin Farms Shopping Center. Most of you know the Franklin Farms Shopping Center. You don't call it the Franklin Farms Shopping Center. You call it Jose's, because that's where Jose's is.
Jumbo and delicious.
Or Fast and Furious, whichever one you want to call it. But we'll be right beside Jumbo and Delicious, like he's talking about there, but we'll be in the total opposite corner. It's kind of a crazy thing. I was praying on a Monday, God, show me somewhere in Greenbrier we can move to that I've seen, but I haven't seen. And, you know, I'd seen this place. I knew that people had used it as a worship place before, and, but I just discounted. I'm like, it doesn't look big enough. There's no way it could be big enough. But then, you, we got permission to go in. We went in, and we looked, and what was set up as a sanctuary is a, is an area that'll seat somewhere in the ballpark of 175 to 200 people. So it's kind of crazy. It doesn't look like that. Everybody who comes in, walks through the doors, and walks in the sanctuary says, wow, that's way bigger than what I thought it was. And so God has set that up for us right there in Franklin Farms. We'll have great exposure. We'll have premium parking to the restaurants after we get out of church. And as a matter of fact, when Jumbo and Delicious fires up their grill, the smell just kind of wafts through the whole building. So y'all don't have to worry about me preaching long over there. Now, Brother Steve comes over, I don't know, he likes hamburgers too, so it'd be good.
So I ain't gonna miss that Jose's. I'm gonna tell you that. So it's a wonderful, and it's a beautiful, perfect location. Brother Johnny and his church, along with our construction team here, have been able to renovate that place, and it's almost ready. If you get an opportunity, there's somebody working there every day, so stop by. Just knock on the door. I think y'all keep it locked most of the time, but soon the doors will be open. And if you want to stop by with a hammer in your hand or a paintbrush, you can do that too. All right, other questions? Thank you, Ms. Debbie.
What's gonna be the state requirement for the children, including a sprinkles system?
I defer to Dr. Parker. I have no idea.
Wherever children are, we have to have the highest level, obviously, of our safety equipment that we have. And so, but that's only when we have them more than four hours a day. So if, for instance, for when we're here for Sunday school and the other activities, it's not, it's not required if it's under four hours. It's just when it goes beyond that point. So the children's wing is fine as it is now, but as we develop our plan further, or to expand with Grace Baptist Academy, and then in the future, of course, we want to bring it up to the highest level of code, right? Yeah.
Great question. Thank you, Mr. John.
Good, it is. Brother Charles, thank you.
There was another question I think I saw over here. Other questions? Ms. Jeanette?
Yes, ma'am.
This may have already been discussed, I don't know, but the building that you wanted to buy, we wanted to buy in Springfield. Are we using that now for a warehouse? Are we renting that space?
Okay, great, great question. Actually, we've been associated with that warehouse since 2012, and we've used some portion of it for storage. The reality is now, we do not lease. The owner of the building gives us a free space. We do share a little bit in the utilities at a minimal cost, but we have a large portion of the warehouse to use for raw warehouse space and whatever. And it's at a great price, free. So they've been great partners, and even through this, even in our postponing and our agreement to postpone the sale of the building, or and the close of the building, they're great partners, and just, they want to do what they can to help Grace Baptist, and we want to do what we can. But we've just got to wait for the time, and meanwhile, we've got to make some other provisions to keep and continue to do what God wants to do in the meanwhile. Okay, so great. Other questions?
One?
I mean, I got my Greenbrier pastor here too, so either one of you can answer. But what does life group look like for both campuses? Because like, I know it's been kind of a concentrated effort to have here in a central location, but it kind of sounds like it may not work that way going forward.
Okay, well, the simple answer to that is really, there are some aspects of Greenbrier, the Greenbrier Campus that will change as far as how they do ministry. In other words, they'll, they'll begin Wednesday nights, things there on that campus. But the reality is, everything is under the banner of Grace Baptist. So our ministries mimic, our ministries. So life groups are done here, life groups are done there. Sunday school is done here, Sunday school is done there. So those ministries mirror each other, and like, and the schedule will remain the same. We'll do church-wide life events, okay, which will encompass church-wide, their, the Greenbrier Campus, church-wide. And then we'll do division-wide, and they'll be a part of division-wide at Greenbrier as well. And then class, or then we take a week off, and then our class, and everybody will do class events. So those Sunday school classes and life events mirror what we do here. It's just in a different location. Shout it out.
Those that we would have seen here normally as part of our life group existed before Greenbrier may not be that way anymore. I mean, they may be part of Greenbrier's life group.
You will, you will see them at church-wide events. You may not see them for other events. Yes, ma'am.
Grace Baptist Academy, what's scheduled for different grades, for higher grades? Have you got a schedule for that, or just?
Yes, sir. It's gonna be, it's gonna be real simple. This August in 2020, we'll begin kindergarten, which will be one grade addition to what we have. And from that point on, we'll bring one grade a year after that. This is why we've got to begin, and this is why I mentioned if, with approval from the deacon body, to put together, assemble a team that would go out into the future to see what perhaps we can do, maybe even on this campus, okay? Because some of our plans have changed, obviously, even on this campus, that we can continue to house Grace Baptist Academy. We can go to third grade on our campus. After that, we got to have somewhere to go. So that's what that team Other questions? You're doing great at questions, by the way. I hope I'm doing great at answers. Yeah, I'll just call him Brother Johnny. Other questions?
Just wondering if there was plans to look for another piece of property, since we did not get the other piece of property. And you were talking about the pledges. How much, you said how much was pledged and how much was brought in. There was not a lot of the pledges that were brought in that was supposed to be, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I was just wondering about looking for another piece of property. That's the reason that we couldn't get that property, because we didn't get the pledges, right?
Well, the reason why we didn't get that piece of property was, one, because the, and let me answer your question in segments. I'm gonna go the last one first. The reason why we lost that piece of property was because that the owner had come to us after we had already launched JIE. We already launched a plan that we would first purchase the warehouse, then we'd purchase that piece of property. The owner came and said, we really want you to buy the land first. As we prayed about it, as we talked about it, we thought it more conducive to stay with the schedule. In other words, that building was more important to us first, because the land was a long-term plan. So we went back, we prayed about it, we fasted, and you voted that we would stick with the schedule. So I went back to the owner and said, we've got to stick with the schedule. He asked for permission to pursue selling that land, because they really wanted to sell it and close. And I said, if it's the Lord's will, we'll keep it. If it's not, we'll, but we can't buy it first. So, in other words, that's how we lost the sale of the land, because he asked us to deviate from the schedule. Now, going back to the other questions in terms of, can we find some more land? This is going to be, again, I go back to what I'm calling the journey team, or the dream team. We're gonna assemble some spies to go out into the future to see if that may even be a possibility. But in that, to try to connect the dots of what's got to happen next, so we can get to what's in the future. So hopefully, we can. Maybe we don't have to, okay? One of the things that was not part of JIE at all was a Greenbrier Campus. And God brought that to us, and we realized that we can grow and reach people for free. Now, obviously, it's cost a little bit more since we started, okay? But how we were able to start that campus, it wasn't part of our plan, and it wasn't part of our budget. And God really gave us an efficient way of reaching people. As we see this thing over the next six to eight months grow, by 70, 80, 90 more people, we're really seeing a viable option for growing, which, if that's the case, really helps us in terms of facility and facility needs, even on the main campus. We need a building for GBA and educational space, but we may not have to do much in terms of worship space. Right now, we got room, okay, as you see on Sunday morning with the opening. And then we can continue to grow in other places and not, and not really need anything here. So we're just gonna put this team together and pray through how that might turn out for the immediate future, or the immediate and then our future. So I hope that answers your question. That's a great question. Brother Bob?
Y'all must ate a lot of that chili. Y'all not moving fast.
I'd like to say just a word about the pledges. And it's apparent that a lot of people are not paying their pledges. And if you're not paying your pledges, then you really need to think about what you're not doing, because you made a commitment. You said, I will. And if you're not doing that, you need to think about what you're doing. Because we talk a lot, and I mean, this is wonderful, but it cannot proceed without the resources to do it. And the resources are in our pockets. And there's no reason in the world why anybody would pledge $108 a month and then not give it. And so, let me just challenge all of us. If you made a pledge, keep your pledge. And let's get this thing done. And Brother Steve's talked about deviations, and he's talking about changes that we've had to do. But a lot of that's because we don't have the money, and because people are not giving. And you're not giving what you promised to give. Now you think about that. There's a place on the bottom of the envelope down there that just says, other JIE. See, that's a good place to write that in, right there. And designate $108 a month above your tithe. And keep your pledge. That's all.
The Lord has been very, very gracious and very good to us, and He has blessed us, and folks are being impacted in our community. And we want to continue this. We're asking God's hand of continued blessing on this. And this all encompasses you and your ministry, your involvement, your participation, and not just, as Brother Bob said, financially. That's, that's a huge portion. It is a huge portion. I am very thankful that we've taken the $208,000 that you've given. I'm very, as your pastor, I'm very grateful for that. And because of God's provision, He's made that look like about $400,000, because He can do that. But here's the thing. What we could do for our community and beyond with that total commitment, not only financially, but being physically involved, being here, being a part of 101. How easy is it to ask somebody to come to church with you? And you know what? By and large, for the most part, David, they'll come when you ask, will they not? You may have to ask several times, and several people, but they'll come. And when they come, whether they show up under Brother Johnny's preaching, or they come over here, I promise you, they're gonna get a word from God, and they're gonna get an invitation to life change. So invite people to come. It's easy, and it don't cost you anything but your willingness. Invite people to come and experience what God is doing here. As a matter of fact, really, as we close out tonight, we're gonna have a time of invitation, a time of just maybe whatever God is laying on your heart and leading you to do even tonight. You may be in this place, and you may be a guest with us. And I pray that if you're our guest with us, that tonight you saw just a glimpse of the future. You know a glimpse of the future is coming. You know they may bring back grapes and pomegranates from the promised land and come and say, this is where we're going. And you realize tonight, you know what? I want to be a part of this. I want to be a part of this church. I need to be a part of what God is doing here in our community through this church. And I want to take my gifts and talents and use them at Grace Baptist. Maybe you're here, and you're a church member, and maybe God has spoken to you in other ways. Maybe you got a gift of being a part of construction and volunteer. Maybe that's a gift that you have, and certainly, we need that. Maybe you got a gift of, in some other area of service of your life, ministry, but you've not been using it. Maybe tonight, you say, Pastor, you done got me on Sunday, and now you done got me. I came to a JIE presentation, and the Lord done shook me down. Why don't you take today, every time you come here, I say this, because I mean it. Why don't you take today and let it be the first day in the rest of your life? We don't know how much time we got left. But don't you want to maximize for the kingdom what you do have left? Maybe tonight, hey, listen, and Brother Bob's a retired preacher, you know what I'm saying? I don't say much to Brother Bob. When he gets the microphone, just do whatever you want to do. He's earned that right, right? But maybe tonight, the Lord spoke to you. Maybe you got a little convicted tonight. Realize, I've not been in this thing like I need. Hey, it's easy to get derailed. It's easy to get derailed. We get distracted out here. And hey, sometimes, listen, sometimes we could just get boogered up by the circumstances. Oftentimes, I wonder if there's anybody here tonight that didn't know that, you ain't even seen them areas we showed on the camera. You ain't even been there, have you? You didn't know we doing all this stuff? Every day, we got a full-time construction team working to make this place the best that it can be, maximizing what God has given. You're gonna see an outstanding children's department unfold over the next three months back here. Well, you know what? We need your help. And guess what? We can stretch a dollar, but it's still got to take the dollar to stretch. Maybe you've been convicted on it. I tell you, well, tonight, Ms. Pat Ruffin, our financial secretary, is here. And maybe you say, Pastor, I don't even remember what I pledged. She does. I don't. She does. I don't know what anybody gives or anybody pledges. I don't want to know all of that. That's your business and God, but somebody's got to keep the books. And Ms. Pat's here tonight. Maybe you're here tonight. She can help you. So, Ms. Pat, I need to know, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna make good on my pledge. I'm gonna get called up. This thing goes through August of this next year, 2020. So we're looking at nine more months. What would you do with the next nine months? Maybe you're new, and you hadn't been exposed to any of this. You're like, JIE, I've seen that everywhere. I have no idea what it means. Okay? And tonight, you say, you know what? If I'm part of this church, maybe I need to be a part of it, committed financially to this JIE as well. And maybe you never filled out a pledge card, because nobody's giving you one. Guess what? You can fill one out tonight if you want to. You're not obligated, you're not obligated to give one down. You're only obligated to be committed to what the Lord leads you to do. He's called us to give a tenth of our income to the local church. Above that, that's a tithe. Above that, it's an offering. But maybe God has spoke to you tonight. You know what? Ms. Jackie's sitting with Ms. Pat, helping her and assisting her, our administrator. She can help you with the helping her and assisting her, our administrator, she can help you with a pledge card. Maybe the first time it came, maybe you just need to re-up on a pledge card or something. During this invitation, we're going to have the freedom just to move about in this sanctuary, come and pray. I invite every single one of you, get up in the altar and pray for our future. Hey, I selfishly ask you, pray for me as your pastor. I love you with all my heart, and I'm going to lead you well, best I can. I'll do anything I can for you. But this is the future of our church and the future of our ministry. What do you want to do with it? It's up to you. You here have never been saved, I want you to come get saved. Jesus died for your sins, was buried, and got up from the dead, so tonight you could have eternal life. Tonight and right now is the time to take a step to the future.